All right, everybody, we're gonna get started. I want to thank everybody for being here for our Town Hall tonight. You know, I, over two years ago now, made a promise to all of you that we would be transparent, and we would have good communication with the community, and promised you that we would have Town Halls. Thankfully, many of the other supervisors agreed, and so this is our series, this is, I believe, the fourth one. And so, I want to thank you all for being here. I'd like to just make some introductions. Steve Smith, our CIO, is here. Sheriff Barnes is here. Chief Shallowitz. Mike McGee. And Scott Riddle. So, as we get through the evening here, we get to the end, and question and answer. If you have any questions directly for them, they'll be happy to answer those for you. At the end of this, we'd encourage all of you to go to the county's website and take a survey. We're looking for feedback, helps us with the direction that we're going in, understanding what the community would like to do. So if you could, there is just a tab right on the top of the county website, and it is, let's see, what does it say? Community Feedback Survey. So if you could just click on that tab, it would be extremely helpful for us. So, appreciate that. So with that, I'll hand it over to Steve Smith to give his presentation.
Sure. Thank you Supervisor. I'm Steve Smith, the County Administrator for Sutter County. I am appointed by the Board of Supervisors to oversee and help run departments and implement the policies of the Board of Supervisors. I do not oversee elected officials, like our sheriff, but work closely with them on their budgets and other operational needs. Supervisor McKelley mentioned, Sutter County's been doing a lot of outreach. We've had a Town Hall in each district. Well, this is the fourth, so we have one planned for District Two in, let's see, on June 9th. And we've had other community meetings as well. We look forward to having a Sutter County Board of Supervisors meeting at a school, most likely the high school here, but I'm not sure, or here, but probably next school year. I think it's getting a little close to the end of this school year. So, the Board of Supervisors wanted to perform some outreach to primarily inform them about the thoughts that the community may have on priorities and strategy. Welcome. So I'm gonna go over some information with you, and feel free to interrupt me if you have any questions, or I'm happy to take questions at the end as well. So, I have some information on here. A lot of you may already be familiar with it, so I'm not gonna go over all of it, but Sutter County is one of the original 27 counties that was formed when California became a You'll see some important information here. One, population, just under 100,000. River levee miles, 260, which is quite a bit for a county our size, which is only 600 square miles. Eighty-eight percent of it is prime farmland. We all know we're an agricultural community. But something I think a lot of people might be surprised to hear is that 68% of Sutter County is in a FEMA flood zone. And that means, in a FEMA flood zone, you cannot develop housing or industrial commercial buildings unless you elevate out of the flood plain. And it's one thing if you're in part of the flood plain that is, say, a foot or two deep, and you just, you elevate a foot or two, you bring in some filter, or you build up your foundation a little bit. But there's areas in the county where it's over 20 feet deep, and it just doesn't make sense unless you're building a house that looks like it's on the coast of, you know, one of the Carolinas or something like that. So, it's a major impediment to development in Sutter County. It is good that we preserve ag land, but we also need at least some growth to stimulate jobs and housing markets. The, Sutter County has the highest percentage in the state. The next closest county is in the mid to high 30s, and I think that's Yolo, actually. And then Solano is also in the low 30s, I believe, and from there, it goes down drastically. So Sutter County, when it comes to just development of properties, is at a severe disadvantage compared to every single county in the state. It's not all bad news, but... So I wanted to show this map of Sutter County. This identifies the different basins within the county, but I think that the next map is a little more poignant. So you'll see, the map over on the left shows all the areas of the county that are in a flood zone, FEMA flood zone. Up here in Live Oak, we're not, thankfully, but you'll see development in the county. There's a little area down in the Sutter Point specific plan, and I'm sorry if I'm in some people's way, try to move around, but basically, the entire county, other than the Buttes and north from Uba City north, are in a flood plain. We also know there's not gonna be any real development ever in the Buttes. So if you take that land out, basically 80% of the county cannot be developed as is. Supervisor McKelley has been working hard with the Department of Water Resources and with Congressman Garimendi's office, and also coming up now with Lamolfe's office. I know they're in Communications, because we're working on getting the bypass levee up to standard, like the Sutter Butte Flood Control Agency did for the levees on the west side of the Feather River. And that's why this map recently changed. So you'll see, this is a bit older. The flood level's actually lowered some here because of the improvements done to the levee. However, this, all of this flood depth, and you'll see the darker the colors, the deeper it goes, so this is, the red is 15-plus feet deep. Looking at this, this is mainly because of this levee, that water would back up into Sutter County if there were a high water event and a levee broke, the bypass levee broke. So the bypass levee is not even up to 100-year standard. Our certified levees, FEMA-certified, those are 200-year flood level. So there are a few patches on the bypass levee that are actually only like 10 or 20-year, and we're looking at getting those fixed this year. We already have the funding, Subufka's worked with us, and Department of Water Resources, and we're trying to build upon that to look at what we can do for the remainder of the So, one of the things I wanted to talk about, and I don't know if you follow Facebook or see some of the political goings-on, because it is campaign season for Sutter County Supervisors, not for Supervisor McKelley, but every two years, there's five Supervisors, so in every election, there's either two or three, three depending on the year, and this is a year with two Supervisors, District Two and District Three. The grand jury, well, let me go back to that, sorry. I was saying, you may have seen things in, on political ads that says Sutter County is broke, Sutter County is closing a fire station, and I just wanted to address that. Sutter County is not broke. Sutter County has always paid all of its financial obligations on time, and the Board has not considered closing a fire station. Another thing is a tax measure. The Board has not considered a tax measure. But some of that talk is out of there, because funding for Sutter County Fire, which indirectly would impact Live Oak, is at risk, or is plainly, I guess, it's not adequate. Sutter County Fire, CSAF, and I'm gonna go back to a map, just to show you real quick. The Sutter County Fire Department, which Live Oak, City of Live Oak contracts with, has three stations. One is here in Live Oak, paid for by the city. Oh, and I'd like to recognize, we have City Manager Aaron Palmer here as well, so thank you for coming, sir. So, that's paid for by Live Oak. There's also a station in the town of Sutter, and one just south of Uba City by Berry School, called Oswald Tudor, even though it's on Berry. The CSAF, which is County Service Area F, is essentially the area that Sutter County Fire Department serves, and it's, this, basically, the Uba City basin, all of this area on this side of the bypass. There are volunteer stations in Robbins that Sutter County doesn't operate, and Meridian, with at least one paid person in Meridian, and then there are volunteer stations in south Sutter County as well. But, years ago, residents in CSAF, which is the majority of Sutter County, got together and said, hey, we have these volunteer stations, we want a higher level of service, we would like to have, basically, urban-level services for fire instead of rural, rural or volunteer. So the people got together and taxed themselves, and in the 90s passed a special fire tax. It's got several different elements to it, but essentially, the main takeaway is, the majority of structures, homes, are charged $0.2 per square foot. So if you had a 2,000-square-foot home, it costs you $40 a year to pay for fire service. At the time that was passed, there was not an inflator included. So, the service area, the Fire Department, has been dealing with essentially the same amount of revenue from the special fire tax since the 90s. Now, if you build new homes, sure, you're adding to that, there are certain structures you build that would add to the tax base, but Sutter County, which you may have heard, 68% of which is in a flood zone, does not have a lot of development. So we're not putting, you know, Uba County builds 400 homes a year. City of Roseville, I think they're slated to build 1,000 homes this year. Sutter County, over the past five or eight years, has averaged about 15 homes a year. So they're just the custom homes you see out. That's not including Live Oak or City of Uba City, but the unincorporated areas. I don't know how many Live Oak has built recently, though. I know there's...
Last year's got over 100.
Okay, yeah, because I...
Two years will be 170.
Okay. So 170 in two years. Not bad for the size of Live Oak as well, so that's very positive. So let me go back. So the grand jury did a report last year, and they talked about the needs of the fire station. We had been looking at this already, as we saw the funding, we know the funding is dwindling. There was a fund balance, or kind of a reserve account, if you will, savings account, that we could see getting cut down over the years, because we had to use it to supplement fire. And the grand jury recommended that Sutter County look at ways to create sustainable fire funding. They found that there was outdated equipment, there are staffing shortages, and there are inadequate funding streams overall. So, over the past couple of years, and as I explained, the tax base in County Service Area F, that was meant to cover the salaries, benefits, and equipment of Sutter County Fire Department, other than the Live Oak Station, which has its own tax base that it pays out of. But the reason I'm talking about this is because if Sutter County Fire Services, if we have a lack of resources, it impacts mutual aid to Live Oak, it impacts mutual aid to Uba City, and essentially, it's like a domino, because Uba City provides a lot of mutual aid into Marysville, so it impacts our region if any one Fire Department is having a lack of funding or staff. So, over the past couple of years, the Board said, all right, we're gonna use some general fund money, that's the discretionary revenue that the county has, we're gonna use some of it for CSAF. They've never done this in the past. In fact, CAS, CSAF had a loan of outstanding of a few hundred thousand dollars to build the Sutter Fire Station that was being paid back over years, and the Board said, okay, we're gonna forgive that, so you'll see your forgiveness of a loan. To build the fire station in the town of Sutter, the Board helped purchase two fire engines, funded additional firefighter positions, I believe it was a 700-and-some-thousand-dollar match over three years for Safer Grant funded. What's Safer?
Safe and Adequate Funding for Emergency Response.
Okay, Safe and Adequate Funding for Emergency Response. The government loves its acronyms, so Safer it is. And, the reason we needed additional firefighters is because, or staff, they're not always a firefighter position, but, you know, engineer, captain, is because we had, is it one on, one up, one, what is it called again, John? I'm sorry. Your staff?
Call-in engine?
Yeah.
One up, you call it.
One up, okay. One O staffing, meaning, Sutter County, not here in Live Oak, but the two other stations had one on staffing, which meant one firefighter at any one time, 24/7. And unfortunately, over several years, our, there were injuries, because you can imagine, you get called out, you're by yourself, you're trying to lift someone who's fallen in their home, you're trying to help someone, you're at an accident scene, and we had too many injuries, and it just does not make financial sense to run with only one person. But another thing that came up, I've met a couple times with the Fire Department staff, and one impact I hadn't thought of is, you know, when you're at a fire station by yourself, and you're called out in the middle of the night to, to some accident, and you see something horrific, like a dead child, or whatever it is, and then you're helping out, you're doing your job, and then you go back to the fire station, and you sit there by yourself and have no one to talk to, no one to identify with, no one to kind of get that stress out while you're on your own. So there's, and that's common in, you know, we're social beings, we're supposed to be around people and, and talk to people, and that's how we get through our days. And when you're by yourself in your occupation, it's a real problem. So over the past couple of years, the Board has actually put about $2.4 million in emergency allocations for Sutter County Fire. As I mentioned, how does this impact fire services countywide? I mentioned the mutual aid response, current response time is about five minutes. Without additional funding, it's a zero-sum game for the county. You know, you either have to consider something drastic, like closing a fire station, or going volunteer at one, or you reduce services somewhere else. Is that the sheriff? Is it county administration? Is it the library? Is it some combination of different services, development services, where you go to get your building permits, or whatever it may be? And also, even as a resident of a city, you might say, okay, well, our city does some of those services, but the county also covers probation, district attorney, the jail, elections, treasurer, tax collector, assessor, if I didn't already mention, auditor, controller. There's a lot of things, child support, there's a lot of things that the county does that cities do not do, and no cities do them, for the most part, in California. So, as I mentioned, other, it's a zero-sum game, other services may be impacted if we don't figure out a good solution for the Sutter County Fire Department. One of our big things, especially in the Uba City area, not as relevant here, but is the homelessness response. We have a lot of homeless citizens in the Uba City area, they disturb businesses, residents, and a lot of the calls to the Sheriff's Office, and particularly YCPD, are for dealing with homeless individuals, whether it ends up being a mental health issue, or just something's sanitary issue with garbage and other issues in front of businesses. So you, I know a question might be, well, all right, you're talking about funding, but are you using the funding you have now efficiently? One thing, Sutter County is audited every year, as is every county. There's a single audit, which is just the term of it, single audit, and, or that's the name of it, and it is done every year for our federal program. So we have federally-funded programs in different areas, particularly behavioral health and welfare and social services, but most of the departments have some sort of federal grant, and those are audited every year by an outside firm, not our auditor, controller. We also have a management audit every year, done by an outside firm, and then our auditor, controller's office also provides different performance audits for different programs each fiscal year. On top of that, Sutter County has done some unique things to be efficient and to try to save taxpayer dollars. Sutter County is the only county in the state that runs behavioral health services for another county. Every single other county has its own behavioral health department. We run it for Uba County, combining resources. We are the only county in the state with a bi-county public health officer that's full-time. If you're a county under 50,000, you don't have to have a full-time health officer. That doesn't apply here in Sutter County, we have 99,000 people, you have to have a full-time health officer. A couple of years ago, I went down to talk to the state health officer with folks from Uba County, and they agreed to allow us to do this and split the position between the two counties. We have a tri-county juvenile hall that Uba County runs for Uba, Sutter, and Palooza. We have tri-county child support services that Yolo runs for Palooza, Sutter, and themselves. We have tri-county weights and measures truck program that Sutter County runs for Nevada County and Uba County. We have bi-county farm advisors shared with Uba County. Sutter Animal Services Authority, run by Uba City, for both Live Oak and Sutter County. We share a homeless camping facility over, that Sutter County runs, over on Second Street, and then we've also partnered with Butte County on Subufka, as I mentioned earlier, Sutter Butte Flood Control Agency, to shore up the levees. So, Sutter County does everything it can in its power to be efficient, from the standard audits ongoing and management audits, to combining services with multiple jurisdictions. So, as Supervisor McKelley mentioned, we have a survey on the Sutter County website, suttercounty.org. If you go to suttercounty.org, you'll see a button on the top that says Community Feedback Survey, or something similar. Go to that. We had some polling done about six months ago, and it was countywide polling, so some people in Live Oak, some unincorporated areas, some in Uba City. And their top priorities here, addressing homelessness, maximizing local control of funding. I think that issue came up because a lot of us saw during COVID that the governor held the purse strings above our head, trying to get us to do certain things. We know that we pushed back, I think, in a good way and adequately, to protect our citizens and businesses. I know, so Dr. Lou, who's our bi-county health officer, opened Sutter and Uba Counties up before any other counties in the state, back in 2020. That was on May 4th, 2020. And the governor was not happy about that, and ABC agents were sent in to Sutter County restaurants and started talking about giving fines for allowing, you know, people to eat inside. The Sheriff's Office was all over it, and maybe he can talk more about that, but, and I know my office, we were on the phone with the governor, well, not himself, the governor's staff, until, you know, it was 10:30 at night, Dr. Lou and I, and Robert Bendorf at the time, who was the Uba County CIO. So we protected Sutter County businesses, and that was very important to the Board and is ongoing. But I think that's what spurred that need to maximize local control of funding. Maintaining fire, emergency, medical and sheriff response times, upgrading firefighter equipment, preventing the closure of a fire station, repairing roads, and supporting local businesses. You know, Sutter County, through CARES Act funding, which every county got, Sutter County put about 40% towards local businesses and nonprofits. Definitely percentage higher than any surrounding county that I can think of. So, it just shows the commitment the Board has, because we, we could've, as a county, kept that money and put it towards county facilities, or done something which is badly needed as well, but we also know the community needed that money to maintain businesses. So, as I mentioned, the website, suttercounty.org, or suttercounty.org/feedback, if you would go, and the survey's a couple minutes. It's not, it's not very long, but there's an area where you can write narratively anything that isn't on the checklist, that will ask you to rank the priorities, but you can also put in different priorities that you have, and we see them. I think we're close to 250, 300 responses, but we're always hoping for more. So, if you, please spread the word to any friends or family that live here that may want to participate. So, with that being said, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them now on, on any of that information, and if not, I'll sit back down, and we can go through different county issues that we're dealing with. I don't want to take up the whole time, but happy to discuss any items. All right. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you, Steve. As you can see, he has a big job, he has a lot to keep track of, it is a stressful job that he does, and we appreciate it, and on top of that, he has to deal with the five of us Supervisors. So, it's not all doom and gloom, like, like he said, and since I'm elected, I guess I get to give you the good news of what we've accomplished over the last two years. When I first came on, we started with passing a hemp ordinance, which seemed to be difficult for the previous Board to do, and so we got that done right off the bat, and we're happy to do that. Next thing I think that we're really proud of is, we revamped our code enforcement ordinance and really put teeth in it. Hired two new code enforcement officers, and, you know, the reason that we did that was, we got so many complaints that not everybody was following the rules, or pulling the proper permits for what, or projects that they had going, and so we wanted to address that right away, then we did that. Now, the fines that we put in were to state statute, to the legal limit. If we could've raised those fines a little more, we would have. And what we originally projected, as far as revenue that we create, was somewhere around $40,000 to $50,000 per year, and at almost exactly the one-year mark, we've taken in $160,000 in revenue, excuse me, just a bit above that. And so that's good, but moreover, what's more important is that it's doing exactly what we intended, which we're starting to see a downward trend in the violations themselves, which means everybody is playing by the same rules, and it's fair for everybody, and so that's, that's one of the big accomplishments with the Board. You know, one of the, I think, really bright points, and we look into the future, we're, they just broke ground at Sutter Point, and, you know, the possibilities there are really endless. Three million feet of industry and possible distribution centers, which would, you know, really help with sales, you know, tax revenue. And so we're really looking forward to that, you know, but again, we don't know exactly how long that may be, but, you know, now that they've broken ground, it's gonna look much more attractive for businesses to look into that area, so looking forward to that. A couple of years ago, when I was campaigning, you know, we, we talked a lot about Calpurs and our unfunded pension debt, and happy to be able to say to you that, at this point now, we've reduced the time to be able to pay off that pension debt by estimated five to seven years. So, so definitely gaining ground in that regard. You know, also, even through COVID, and, and, you know, you have the shutdown of businesses, and it was really tough, and obvious... and it was really tough, and obviously we had a dip in, in revenue. This board made a commitment to build back our reserves to the tune of $1 million a year, and we're doing that, and, and we're staying true to that. So certainly proud that in tough times, we're able to, to, you know, be financially responsible and build our reserves back. You know, when I was campaigning a couple of years ago, I said to all of you that we were going to trim the fat. We were going to try to cut programs where we could. And this board did that, and thankfully, all of us felt the exact same way. So we saw our county health clinic, which was underutilized, and we decided to close that. And that saved us over half a million dollars a year annually. So that, the combination of the Calpers and building our reserves back, I think, shows that this board is, you know, financially responsible. And I think, you know, as we, I looked down at the end of the table here, probably, what's, what's most important, we talked a lot about pay raises for fire and pay raises for the sheriff's department and sheriff's deputies, and we've done that. And just last month, we gave our sheriff's deputies the highest pay raise in Sutter County history. So we're all certainly proud of that, and that was obviously much deserved for a very long time. And as we move forward, we're going to continue to work on the issues we have with fire. And so I think that's about it, you know, for what we've got done. But we've been moving at a furious pace. You know, we talked before, when I came on, some of our meetings were going four hours, five hours. We had one meeting that went six hours long. And so we've been getting a lot accomplished, so really, really proud of that. And a good group of us on the board, really like serving with, with all the other four guys. And like I said, Steve holds it all together. I don't know how he does it, but he does it. So with that, I think we'll take some questions from any of you, if any of you have questions for any, any of us sitting up here.
Sorry.
Oh, did you?
The sheriff, I didn't know if you had anything specific you wanted to address, because I know the sheriff, obviously, contracts or Live Oak.
I'm always happy to talk.
Go ahead.
Chuck, it's okay. I'm actually going to come up, so I'm not yelling across. It's easier to reach everybody over here.
How was everybody? Good. So, you know, some of the information that Steve was sharing with you, I just kind of wanted to point out, you know, our, our fire guys, there's always a little bit of ribbing between law enforcement and fire, and, you know, that's, that's something we always do. But the truth of the matter is, when I speak about public safety, I always make sure that I include the fire department, because they are essential to what we do. And in many cases, they get there before we do, and they start, you know, providing services. And so as these gentlemen know, and as the chief knows, you know, about a week and a half ago, my, my four-day-old granddaughter had a medical emergency and had to, we had to call 911. And so, you know, I was very thankful for these gentlemen for showing up, because if they hadn't been there, there's no telling what that outcome could have been, right? And so, you know, I'm very happy to say that my, my granddaughter was in the hospital for about a week, but she's back home now, and she's doing very well. And I owe that to these gentlemen. And so, you know, when we talk about public safety, we all do this together. And so what impacts the sheriff's department impacts the fire department and vice versa. And so, you know, for us, you know, as Supervisor pointed out, we, we got raises this la- last year. And that went a long way to help stabilize things. But prior to that, we were having about, on average, about a 20% vacancy on positions within the patrol operations side of the sheriff's department. And that, quite frankly, was because people were going to other places to make more money. And they weren't driving long distances to do that. They were, in some cases, just going across the river to do that. And so now that that's been resolved, we're starting to see our department stabilize a little bit. So we're working to build upon that. For everybody here, you guys know I live in Live Oak. This is my hometown. I've lived up here for the last 17, almost 18 years. Absolutely love it. And so I want to see this town flourish, and I want to make sure we have a good level of service. But collectively, I've also got to run all of Sutter County and provide public safety services. And no two communities are the same. Sutter's not Live Oak. Nicholas is not Sutter. Meridian's not, you know, Nicholas. So we really have to tailor our services to each one of those communities. And so it's a difficult challenge, but I think we're pushing in the right direction. Maybe the one big thing last year is that we did a staffing analysis for the sheriff's department. You can find it on our website at suttersheriff.org. The collective outcome of that was we need about 14 positions department-wide to get to a today standard. That's not even to build for the future, right? That's where they say we probably should be right now. Now, I will tell you that most of those positions that they're kind of speaking to are on the corrections side of things, not necessarily patrol operations, so that, you know, that's a plus. But with that, we're already starting to work on that. So we have included in our budget this year an additional sergeant for oversight in the jail. It's made it through the CAO's office. I'm confident the board's going to support and vote that in here at the end of June. So there's just a lot of good things happening, a lot of good momentum. But as, as Steve pointed out, I mean, we do have some challenges, right? When most of your county's in a floodplain, it's hard to generate that, that tax revenue to kind of build for the future. And so that's one of the challenges that we have, so. And with that, I'm happy to answer any public safety questions, sheriff's office questions. Yes? Sure. Yeah, so, you know, without going into a lot of, you know, tactical conversations, we do provide training at the sheriff's department. We do work with all of the schools. You've probably noticed an increased patrol presence before, after, and during school all this week. And we plan on continuing to do that through graduation to make sure that all of our schools are safe. We're not only doing that in this community, which, if you're from Live Oak, you know, you have designated deputies that work up here, right? And you should know them all by name. But we're doing that at the other schools out in the other counties as well. In addition to that, we're meeting with other community partners. I actually have a meeting that I'm going tomorrow to give kind of a presentation on what we do in the schools. And so, you know, rest assured that we do have a good working relationship with the schools. The principals all have my, my cell phone number. They text me. I got a text over the weekend from the principal in Center about a potential problem, and we were able to take care of that before school started today. So we're on top. Any other questions? Yeah, Larry? So right now, as I said, we've asked for one additional position in this year's budget, and we're getting that taken care of. And that, in my opinion, was probably the most critical, because there's a lot of oversight that goes into the corrections side of things. There's state regulations that we have to meet, Title 15 requirements. And so tracking all that information is, is important, especially on the mental health side of things, the medical side of things. But even just tracking little things like exercise time, that all has to be managed, right? And so we needed another person to help do that so we could meet all of our requirements. Now, from that, we're building upon that. So I do have a monthly meeting with the CAO's office. In fact, we had that meeting today, where we're looking at all of the recommendations that are made, and we're developing strategies moving forward to kind of help fill some of those and take care of some of those. I will say, I think out of the, like, there's more than 20 recommendations, but there's only a handful of them that are actually tied to money fiscally. Some of them are things internally that we've already done to kind of make some adjustments to be more efficient. So if you want to take a look at that online, Larry, you can give me a call and swing by the office. We can chat about it. You're welcome. Anything else? Cruz? If I could just address that really quick, we've actually had some discussions with the city of Yuba City, and I think we'd like to do the same with the city of Live Oak and have joint meetings where we're talking about just coordinating. And then certainly, public safety, we can bring the sheriff and the fire chief in to talk about all that as well. But that's something that we're actually starting those discussions now, so. Thank you. Anything else? Thank you, everybody, for taking the time to be here. And the fact that it's important to you guys means it's important to us as well. And so we're on the same page, and I do appreciate that. All right. Oh, shoot, yeah.
I got to follow that up.
Yeah.
Anybody that doesn't know me, I'm John Shalowitz, Sutter County Fire Chief. Just want to, I'm going to kind of go off what that question was right there. We actually have established, what we have to have what's called a disaster council for the county. And in that, we have established a meeting, which we're actually getting back on track now that we have no more, well, COVID's gone, right? We have the normal flu. That's a joke. Anyway, we have established this group, this working group with law and fire, from the cities and the counties and the county, to be able to come and sit and talk about these issues and talk about different things that we can target to try to come after certain things. Communications is a big hot topic, a countywide communications plan, to, to make sure that we are very redundant and very resilient for the future with that. So we do have that. We do, we are starting more and more talks in the public safety realm with that. It's something that we started about, well, about a year ago, and then obviously went back into another uptick. So we were unable to really get those meetings going. And we work with that through the Office of Emergency Management, which is also kind of, we work very closely together in our offices. So back to fire. As you guys saw, we, and as Steve mentioned, in the past, we've had a very, we've struggled hard for a lot of years to try to make things work, and we're getting to the end of that straw, and the camel's back has broken. So we have to find out a solution to make that work. And that's why we're hoping everybody gets out and does this, this survey. It really gives us the information of what you guys are thinking, what's in, what's important. So really, I can't stress it enough to get out to your friends, family, anybody, and get their opinions on that thing so that we can get a good intake of what is really going on. You know, rumors of taxiing, rumors of closing stations, all this. And I want to put it out there. I have my cards. I also brought copies of, on that website, there is frequently asked questions. And I brought hard copies of it. If people want that, of some of those questions, I can hand out to people to help people answer some questions. But when we talk about, you know, closing of the fire stations, it's a, you know, it's a scare tactic of the county. We have not mentioned that. We've never said that, that we were going to do that. The board has not come forth with that. And then also, the board has been exceptional, you know, with supporting us through this time. And, you know, the city of Live Oak, we have a great relationship with the city of Live Oak. We always have. We've provided fire services up here for over 30 years, and we continue to do that, and we have a great working relationship with the city. And the city's been awesome with us to do that. And working with Aaron and Mr. Palmer and the, and the city and the city's council. So I don't want to repeat everything that Steve said, but I think it's really important that we get that message out about the survey. And I have my cards here. If anybody has any questions you don't want to ask here, give me a call. My door is always open. My phone's always, always on. So give me a call, and we will get questions answered. Yep, go ahead. You're talking about like the south part of the county? So volunteerism used to be just huge, and it's kind of started to fade off. And usually, it's run by the amount of calls that are in an area. The, the south part of the county is very rural. There's a lot of rural area. But we're starting to see a very large uptick in calls. We're starting to see the Center Point project come in. And there's a general plan with that that talks about when we start interjecting full-time paid firemen down there to try to do that. We keep a close eye on that, and we try to benefit at all of our stations. So we're a combination department. I can't do it without volunteers. These guys have volunteers at every station that go, and I shouldn't say, "I can't do it." "We can't do it." They can't do their job without the volunteers. And every station has them. And, you know, some of these guys, Chief Epperson's been here for a very long time, and his dad was a, was a volunteer for us. And it wasn't, what, 45, 50 volunteers per station in the old times? You know, there was a lot of volunteers running around. Sutter has two. Live Oak has six. Oswald has two. It's hard to get people to commit to volunteer service anymore. So that, we rely on them, though, to help us, and they do. They're very helpful. And we've got a pretty good group up here in Live Oak right now. We've got a big stack group of them, which has been very helpful up here, so. Does that answer your question a little bit? Okay. Absolutely. The board has supported me when I went to them to give them a stipend, that we call it. We have what's called a standby program, and we also stipend them for the amount of, they get $9 a call, and we have Tuesday night trainings. They get $11 for every training they come up. That's to help them pay for, well, $9, we're going to have that to be a gallon of fuel here in about a week or so, right? So we're trying to help them compensate for their time that they're committing to us. And they also, we have another program that we actually bring them back to help assist get better staffing on the engines. A standby program, we give them $50 a day to come in and work for a 24-hour shift. In that, that's supposed to cover their gas and food for that day.
Sorry, John. Did you say that's $50 a day?
Yes, for a 24-hour shift. For a 24, and that's for the volunteer standby program. Anything else?
If I could, Cruz, I just wanted to touch on something that you'd asked about. And next month, we are supposed to have a report back from CHP and our Office of Emergency Management on an evacuation plan for emergencies. Even though we're in a drought, most likely, that's going to be a flood situation, right? But I've been really pushing them to try to get it as quickly as possible, because there is funding out there in this infrastructure bill federally for evacuation, which could mean widening roadways or things of that nature. And so I'm certainly pushing, we're obviously going to miss this year's round of funding, but that's going to go on for maybe five years rounds for that federal, those federal dollars. And so we're going to certainly, when we get that plan, see if there's some money we can get federally from some of that. So thank you. Anybody else? Yes?
That's correct, on the northern bypass levy.
Go ahead.
We do. The, the difficulty is, to be frank, the state and then FEMA do not want to see any development in a floodplain. So at times, they are lax to fund what we feel should be done, which is turn that into a 200-year flood protection levy as well on the bypass. So we're working, a combination of our local and state legislators and Subufka to try to put together a way to have DWR see the benefits in helping Sutter County do that. And it's going to be probably a lengthy process, but we're fortunate to have them already fund. I forget the amount, but I know it's, I think it's about $5 million, maybe more, for those areas that they're going to patch. Is that about right? Was it $5 million?
Yeah.
Yeah, for a couple of the breach points. I think there's three areas. And, but to do the levies to 200-year protection, I think it's about, it was $10 million per mile?
Yeah.
It's about $10 million per mile. I don't recall how many miles the bypass levy is. Do you recall? So probably 17 to 20 miles, something like that.
On just the west or east side, yeah.
Yeah, that, that's just one side of it, of course, because two sides to that. So you're looking at a lot of money. But there is money out there that we're going after, and we have assistance at the federal and state levels to do so. But it's, it's not just applying for, it's getting them to be willing to fund it and say, "Look, we don't, we don't need to fund this to put a, a, some new subdivision out in the middle of 20-foot-deep, you know, floodplain, but we need it for farmers who need to rebuild their walnut hauler and don't want to put all the electricity 10 feet high, you know, in there." It's just not practical for those folks. And, you know, if you, the other thing is, I want to address this real quick. So there are, at times, variances to the floodplain issues. However, it's typically limited to ag. Ag buildings can put in vents, they call it on the floor, that allow floodwater to flow through. Is that about right, Mike? Mike is our building official for the county and also oversees a lot of the code enforcement division. And you can't really do that with a house. You can do it with a, an ag building. The board will allow variances for that, and FEMA is okay with it. But if you come and say, "Well, hey, I want to, I want to..."
But if you come and say, well, hey, I want to, I want to build a gas station here with this mini mart, the board really cannot do that, because they run the risk of the entire county's flood insurance going away. Meaning, if you have flood insurance on your house or your neighbors do, FEMA can say, hey, board of supervisors, you allowed too many variances. You're not sticking to the National Flood Insurance Program guidelines. So next year, when people go to renew, no one's going to be allowed.
Oh, yeah, I just wanted, when you're finished, to touch on it too.
Yeah, and so Sacramento County, probably 10 years ago, got fined, I think about $350,000 for building, not a lot, some houses in a floodplain. And there's a list, you can find it if you go to the federal government, different websites. I forget which one, but I found it one day, and it has every single city and county in the United States. And if they're on suspension or they're on, right, it's, it's extensive. So they act on it. And Sutter County, they're supposed to audit about every five years, FEMA will come out. But we got audited randomly. We got a letter just a couple of weeks ago about a property, which I think we'll be fine on, but they're on it. It's not like, oh, go ahead and do it, and they're never going to notice. They notice, so.
Yeah, I'll just, you don't have to turn to the camera, Chuck, I'll stand up. Sorry, if I could just touch on that, this is one of the things that really gets me fired up, actually, because, just so that you understand, the Sutter bypass is state-operated levy. So it's not like it's something that we can handle, our levy districts don't do that, it's state-run. And so the real problem with this situation is that it's FEMA, which is the federal government who imposes these guidelines on you. But because it's a state levy system, we have to rely on state funding to get the improvements done. So it's an incredibly frustrating situation. However, in talking with D W R and talking with our lobbyists in Washington, what we can do is work with D W R to get some of the engineering done now, and then next year, try to ask for some of that money. When you're talking about $10 million per mile, this is a huge amount of money that, I mean, really, only federal dollars is going to fix this situation, right? But we do feel like we are being unfairly punished for what happens on the Mississippi River, Florida, Texas with hurricanes. And when we have 70% of our area is in a floodplain, how, how can you, you know, ever really get any development? And that's the other thing, too, is trying to make sure that they understand, when we talk about development, we're not talking about subdivisions or anything, like, we're not talking about residential development, but ag development. You know, we couldn't put a walnut processing facility, we couldn't put an almond process, any of that. And so those are the things that are incredibly frustrating. If your house burned down, you're not allowed to rebuild it. And so a lot of those things are incredibly frustrating, but we're working on it. And as Stephen will probably tell you, I'm the squeakiest wheel in the room all the time. But so, so we're working as hard as we can to try to address that, so. Thank you. Anything else that we, sorry, I keep moving. If not, I just, I'd like to say thank you guys all so much for coming, and I want to thank everybody for being up here on the panel. Thank you guys so much for being here. And again, if you can, please take the time to go to our website and, and fill out the survey. It's incredibly helpful to all of us. So thank you again, really appreciate it.